All right. I call the meeting to order for the May 4th Planning Board meeting at 6:00. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I have Jimmy Tarr all the way to my right, who's the alternate Chair. I have Paul Dostal to my right, Bob Wagner to my left. I've got Mike Poschek all the way at the end of the table here, and then Gerard Bueno, our Administrative Assistant. Before we start jumping into the meeting, I wanted to acknowledge that's Paul Dostal's last meeting on the Planning Board after serving 20 years. He's finally retiring.[33.04][33.04][applause] And with that, there are two folks voting or running to take his position, so hopefully they'll vote on May 17th in the town election. And then we'll see you hopefully at a town meeting on May 10th. With that, now is the time for public forums. So this is an opportunity for folks in the audience, virtually or in person, to come before the mic to speak to things that are not related to what's on the agenda tonight. So there is continued special hearing for the marijuana cultivation. So if you're not here to speak to that, and you'd like to bring something else to the Board's attention, or speak to the Board, now is the time. So I'll give a second for if anyone is here not related to this special hearing we got. With that, I will close the public forum. And now, we will reopen our public hearing. So as some of you may know, last week, we had, we opened this hearing. The engineer for the project was ill and could not present on the hearing, so we then closed the hearing, or continued the hearing until this week, when everyone could get all the information at one time. How a public hearing works, first, the applicant will present their project and what they're hoping that we will present, or what we will be voting on. And then after that, there's an opportunity for the way that we have to do it, there's the option for people, supporters of the project come forth and speak. And when they do so, they address the Chair and the Board, and not the applicant. And then after that, comments from opponents of the project will be entertained. And then after that, the Board will ask questions to the applicant and have a conversation based on some of that feedback from the audience. And then from there, the public hearing will be closed, and it'll be the Board deliberating and having their discussions on what's next. With that, I am going to offer the microphone to the applicant and make sure whoever's speaking is near the microphone, so our recorded and virtual audience can listen.
I brought half-sized plans, which are a little easier than those eight and a half-by-elevens.
Thank you. Perfect. Yeah, I can actually read these.
Thank you.
Also, giant plans that Paul is trying to look at. Chris, please. Yeah, so, and I appreciate the continuation. Last week, I was the engineer that was ill and had a nasty bout of flu that I did not want to share with all of you. So I'm glad to be here tonight. I think Bernie Smorowski wants to start on behalf of the organization that's applying for the special permit.
Good evening, Bernie Smorowski. My brothers Ron, John, Jim, and I, and our business partner Jared Glansberger are the owners of property at 140--
Bernie, can you speak up?
Sure. We are the owners of the property at 140A North Hatfield Road. Our business name is Straits Road LLC. In attendance with us tonight are Isaac Fleischer, our attorney from Bacon &amp; Wolson, and Chris Chamberlain of Berkshire Design. Also joining by Zoom is Rajiv Shrinath. We are here tonight to discuss our planned cannabis grow facility at that location. On our agenda this evening, first, I will give a brief introduction, then Chris Chamberlain of Berkshire Design will present the site plan. Lastly, we will address the concerns we have been hearing. As of next year, our family will have been farming for 100 years, 72 of which have been in Hatfield. Our commitment to Hatfield is very strong. With this grow facility, we have an opportunity to add hundreds of thousands of dollars on an annual basis to the town's budget. These funds will come to the town through a signed post-community agreement, which requires a payment to the town in the amount of 3% of gross sales, not net profit. Our neighbors to the north in Whately will have six operational, or soon-to-be-operational cannabis businesses in the near future. They are aggressively taking advantage of this 3% fee. We feel that Hatfield should be doing as well. We may never see this opportunity to provide the town with much-needed funds like this again. Now I'd like to introduce Chris Chamberlain. He's a civil engineer and a principal at Berkshire Design. Thank you.
So, as Bernie said, I'm Chris Chamberlain, professional engineer with Berkshire Design Group, helped Straits Road LLC put this site plan together. I am going to step through the particulars of the site plan, the proposed plot project that we have for this property, and then step through particularly some of the marijuana-specific zoning requirements, all of which were summarized in the cover letter that we submitted, but we'll go through that and make sure to get everything out. And then we happen to participate as the meeting moves on. As an overview, this property, and I'll try to, tough room to show this to everybody, but I'll come to a couple of things. This is primarily to the Board, so I apologize, gotta pick one side versus the other.
We have some of that information.
You do, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, good enough. So this is the outline of the existing parcel here, with Straits Road to the right and North Hatfield Road to the left. I'll have to keep coming back to the microphone, which makes this a little awkward, but we'll do our best. The parcel is a total of 38 acres with frontage on both of those streets, front and back. There are, as you can see, multiple large agricultural fields divided by what on the plan appear to be just sort of dark lines, which coincide with agricultural ditches that have been there for many years for drainage of the fields. There are two larger wooded areas in the southwest and southeast corners of the site. And we've also noted on the plan a number of wetland areas, which include those agricultural ditches, because those have become regulatory wetlands, despite, you know, irregardless of how they were built. And two larger, more natural wetland areas on the southwest side, most of that wooded area being wetland, and then wetland system immediately south of the field that we're going to be looking at in that wooded area to the east. The existing site is undeveloped. There are no existing structures on the site. It is simply woods and fields and a couple of access roads proceeding through the site. So the next sheet, that we'll pause on for just a moment, shows the proposed project. This is, the project as shown is a pretty limited scope, enclosing one large field, the one closest to Straits Road with a security fence, having a privacy screen, constructing three greenhouse structures that are about 30 foot by 96 foot, as well as an office trailer structure, a couple of freezers, and gravel pads, both inside the fenced area for staging and access, and outside the fenced area for parking. The, you know, as the Board members know, we were here in January with being, trying, you know, trying to be upfront with the long-term hope for this property, which is for Straits Road LLC to own the property and lease each of these fields to different growers over time. But again, I want to emphasize that this permit that's being proposed is for this project, which is just the work that we see there. And on the, and before I flip from this page to the more detailed view of the site plan, I want to highlight the red circles in the zoning code, as the Board members certainly know, not that long ago, there were some amendments to the marijuana bylaw requiring offsets to residential uses, and those vary by zone. This project being in the RR zone, there is a 500-foot offset between, and that's measured from the security fence associated with the grow operation to any residential use. And so what we've done is we've identified the residential homes surrounding the property and imposed that 500-foot radius around those structures. And as you can see, the proposed work is close only to those residences on the Straits Road side, and the security fence is outside of that 500-foot radius, which is what this plan is primarily representing. The next plan, which is a larger scale of that front field that I described, again, you can see the security fence, which encloses approximately 170,000 square feet of land area. We've also noted the dimensional zoning requirements on this large site. We easily meet all of those. The security fence has been set behind the zoning setbacks, which are noted in that table and also shown on this plan. Utilities for the site, the power, we're going to bring single-phase power for the limited power use off of Straits Road. Straits Road LLC has already been working with the electric utility to sort that out. Water would be supplied onsite by a new private well, which is indicated on the plan. There's no public water or sewer, so septic is proposed to supply bathrooms for the employees within the fenced area. At the time of the application, we hadn't had a soil evaluation done yet, because we were in the middle of winter. Since then, we've had Alan Weiss go out there for informal tests. The way this winter has gone, formal perk tests have not been the friend of engineers. Everything's been too wet, so that hasn't been done yet, but the informal soil evaluation showed fine sand, good material, and groundwater that's reasonable enough that we have no concerns about building that system. The, as you can see, the impervious area we're creating on this site is pretty limited. There's the three greenhouse structures and a couple other small structures, and we'll also convert existing, what's really plowed field, into some gravel and some other places. On the context of the 38 acres of this site, it's really a negligible change, so as we acknowledged in the application, we're requesting a waiver from a stormwater management plan on this site, just not seeing that the impact is sufficient on this very flat site where all that water's going to run over the fields and eventually really be retained in the site in that system of ditches and travel through it on a relatively long time scale. Of course, there is a security component to these facilities. We have surrounded the entire property with a fence. We've got details of that on one of the later sheets. This is an eight-foot chain-link fence with a privacy screen on it. There's no barbed wire or anything like that proposed. All the secure areas are required by the regulations to be observed by video, so there will be video security cameras throughout the facility. Those, the industry standard is that those are infrared cameras that work on ambient light, so there is no dedicated light related to the security cameras. There is a need to provide light for safety in certain limited aspects, and the proposal is to provide light just immediately around the structures and in the parking area, on timers with photo sensors, just for the safety of employees going back and forth. And that's really just in those colder months, as people are coming and going, when the light comes in late and leaves early. All of those lights are proposed to be full cutoff to avoid any light spill over the property lines, which is the standard that we do on all of our projects. And security personnel would either be at the site or nearby and on-call, available to respond on a 24-hour basis, should the need arise. We have noted signs for the property. The proposal is to have one identification sign on the property, just showing the address. Wouldn't identify it as a cannabis grow facility or anything like that. It would just simply be the address so that deliveries and other folks can find the site as necessary. Site is not open to the public. There are no tours. There are no unauthorized visitors. It's strictly for employees and any expected visitors that are there for business purposes. We did note, speaking of signs, depending on requirements of CCC or the local authorities, if signs are needed on the fence signifying that this is limited access, those would be included, but only to the extent necessary. It's not something we'd like to do, but sometimes in these projects, that becomes a requirement. We have addressed in the application, an issue that always comes up on these projects, odor. I suspect that that's something that'll get discussed a little bit more, and particularly with the operators, who understand it a little bit better than the engineer who's designing the site does. But as we've noticed, pointed out in the application, this is primarily an outdoor grow facility. To clarify, those three structures that we've got there, they're labeled headhouse and storage, which is primarily for equipment and, you know, other items that are needed on the site, storage of sort of general materials. The middle structure is labeled nursery. That is for the mother plants, which are grown in that greenhouse structure and kept separate from the main fields that feed the plant material out to the fields. And then there is a trimming and drying structure that is for bringing the harvest in and processing that. This is a cultivation facility, not what's known as a product manufacturer. The cultivation portion of the license includes bringing the plants in, trimming them, drying them, and then packaging them up to be shipped somewhere else. But there's no extraction or manufacturing of products or edible materials or anything like that. And so there's sort of two key distinctions between the indoor and the outdoor as it comes to odor. In the outdoor grow, air cannot be captured and scrubbed the same way that it can in the greenhouse, obviously. But also, we know that the density of the plants is significantly different. In an indoor grow or in a greenhouse grow situation, you're typically looking at a very dense collection, perhaps one square foot per plant. And in the outdoor, the area dedicated to it may be six, seven, eight, nine times that. And so the plants are spread out over a much larger area, which reduces the density and concentration of that odor. The, as we noted before, you know, obviously, this is something that the Planning Board has considered in terms of those offsets that were imposed. So certainly, you know, one thing that can be done with the outdoor grow is creating distance. And as you can see on sort of that second page of the site plan, you know, the bulk of this portion of the site is several hundred feet away from any other structures, with the exception of the small area close to Straits Road, which still respects that 500-foot setback from any residential structures that was imposed by the zoning. And then we'd also highlight that immediately south of this fenced area, which is in the direction of the most nearby residences, is there's a four-acre area of woods that's proposed to remain, just as is, and in fact, the portion that's closest to the field is wetland area and therefore protected by the Wetlands Protection Act, so we wouldn't have the right to alter any of that immediate woodland, even if we wanted to. In terms of that, the trimming and drying and nursery structures, where we will have the plants sort of undercover and a little bit more concentrated, there's a proposal to have, you know, high-intensity carbon filtration to scrub that air. We provided some technical information. To be blunt, it's somewhat oversized to try to get a lot of turnover of that air through the scrubbers and minimize the odors that are coming out of that very concentrated grow space. And I think some of the other folks here can get into a little bit more of the details of exactly how that's been working in some other facilities that they're involved with. And so I then also wanted to make sure to highlight something else that we went through in the cover letter in our application, which is some of the specific requirements under the marijuana zoning bylaw. And we did our best to explain how we think that this project complies with each of those. To start with, we're in the RR zone, where marijuana cultivation is allowed by special permit, which is why we're here today. The basic dimensional regulations in this zone are easily met on this 38-acre site. Coverage were at less than 1%. As I said, we respected the setbacks with the security fence, and then some, as shown on that detailed site plan. And then the 500-foot overlay that we've mentioned a couple of times. And so then, as we look at the marijuana-specific requirements, which are in Section 7B.5, just to go through these real quick, so the requirement A, which is that the marijuana establishment be operated by someone having a license from the commission. This was stated in the application, and is important, is Straits Road LLC will not hold the license from the CCC. They are going to be the landlord that leases a portion of this property to a licensed operator. Any terms of that lease will include that the operator be licensed with the Cannabis Control Commission, which is a requirement of state law. And Straits Road LLC is also committed to including any conditions, should the Board choose to impose those on any of the tenants that would do business on that property. There's a requirement for setback for marijuana retailers, which doesn't apply. This isn't a retailer. There is a 500-foot setback from public and private schools, licensed childcare facilities, and other child-focused facilities. No portion of this fenced area, with the exception possibly of a barn, is within 500 feet of any structure, and we're not aware of any child-focused uses nearby. The marijuana establishment can't be co-located with residential units. There are no existing or proposed residential units on this property. The next one is that 500-foot setback applicable to the RR zone, that I think I've mentioned enough times by now. Followed by no more than two marijuana retailers in town. Again, this does not include a retail component, so that's not applicable. There's a requirement that the owner or manager of the establishment be available by phone within 24 hours to town officials. The applicant acknowledges that and would be imposing that requirement on the licensee. The marijuana establishment must comply with state law, which we're certainly intending to do. The marijuana establishment signage must comply with the zoning bylaw for general signage, which we're committed to. As detailed, our address sign is proposed to be no larger than two foot by three foot, which is the standard. And then if those on-fence authorized access signs are required, we're proposing to make those no larger than the standard for directional signs that are allowed, which we feel is comparable to another project. Those signs are not allowed to reference marijuana, have iconography, or the words marijuana cannabis. As I mentioned, the intention is just to identify the address of the facility. No marijuana plants, products, or paraphernalia shall be visible from outside the building where the establishment is located. In this case, it's a fenced outdoor area. We have included a plastic screen, which attaches to the fence to obscure any views into the site, to try to comply with that, and also for security purposes. No public events are allowed. None are proposed, and the applicants committed to complying with that requirement. No odor may be noxious or cause a nuisance or impair public comfort or convenience. Marijuana establishments shall incorporate odor control technology and provisions. So as I noted, obviously, this is an outdoor grow facility. I imagine there'll be some discussion over this topic as the meeting moves on. To the extent that we do have control over the air, odor mitigation has been included in the indoor portion. And, you know, and with the location of the site and the vegetated buffers and the spread-out nature of the outdoor grow, the Straits Road LLC feels as though this project complies with that requirement. N, which came up when we were here informally, is the special permit may be limited to the current applicant and provide that the permit shall lapse if the applicant ceases operating the licensed marijuana establishment. Key phrase there is the special permit may be limited to the current applicant, and we just want to highlight that, again, the request tonight is for a special permit that specifically acknowledges that the applicant will own the property, will impose any requirements the Board sees fit on the tenants, but that the tenant would be the licensee and not the special permit holder. And then the last requirement is just the Board may require additional conditions, which I imagine is something else that we'll discuss as things move on. So those are the specifics to sort of the physical site plan, which is my realm of expertise. Before letting things proceed, I just wanted to see if anyone else I'm here with wants to add anything before we hear from the public.
I think we have a couple clarifying questions from the Board before we--
Yep, we do. Chair, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is a simple one. Bernie, you mentioned that you all own the property right now?
Yeah.
Okay. And who was the previous owner?
Jimmy and Lori Motica.
Okay.
And at the time of the application, they did not own it yet.
Right, but you do own it now. Chris, can you describe the, just the nature of the three buildings? Are these hoop houses, in effect?
Yes.
All three of them?
So, correct. The, I believe the mother room in the middle is a transparent greenhouse style, but yes, they're canopy with poly or fabric covering over them.
So typical of the kind of greenhouses that like, say, even Harrison Bardwell has down the street here behind his house, means sort of like hoop, traditional vegetable--
I'm not familiar with that property, but I bet Bernie can chime in better than I can. The type of structure comparable to Bardwell, what they have behind--
Are these like hoop out, like vegetable--
Yeah, it's similar to that. Ego tunnels.
Yeah, so these are not, these are not necessarily permanent structures, right, in terms of--
As far as the building code is concerned, I think they would not be considered permanent structures.
Do they have a floor, concrete floor?
Piers. For the most part, you pour a solid tube. It's not a full pour.
On the core, on the corners?
Correct.
Okay.
The floor will be dirt or--
Some type of pervious. So I have just a couple more questions in LLC to the other members of the Board. So the outdoor grow area itself, you describe as 150,000 square feet, so roughly three and a third acres.
Yes.
Forty-five, forty-five.
Putting me on the spot with my math, but yes.
Okay. And then, this is a technical question that may, you, Chris, might not be able to answer. So the licensees, any idea how many you might have on this particular site, or what you're thinking?
Just one.
Just one. That licensee then has to have as per hour bylaws, would have to have, and to operate in the state anyway, but per our bylaws, would have to have a approved valid CCC license. So they would have to go through the licensing application process with the CCC.
Correct.
So they then would have to do, to do that, they would have to do a community meeting, for example, right? That's part of that licensing process.
That has been conducted.
But by the licensee that will be on this site?
Yes.
When and where?
Hatfield Pharmacy conducted it.
That was the one that was like a Tuesday at 1:00 in the afternoon or something like that.
I don't think that really complies with-- All right, so that, so that would be, so any other future licensees, say, for example, that licensee decides to--
Yeah.
--pull up stakes. They would have to come back and go through that whole process all over again, because they would have to be approved by the CCC. Okay, all right. Thank you. Oh, I, one other maybe technical question for Chris. So Chris, the maps that you've shown us, which are there, they're oriented north-south, correct?
Correct.
Traditionally, these maps are done that way.
See that my north arrow is hiding, yeah, which I apologize. See that my north arrow is hiding, yeah, which I apologize for.
Okay, but it is pretty much on a north-south bias here.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so with the prevailing winds of our area in this growing season being southwest, they're not within your red area because they're further, but about how far away is that closest home downwind, if you will? If you can see, it's above, it looks like it would be just to the right and below where it says proposed cultivation area.
Look back to that larger plan. So you're saying this one?
Yeah, yeah, because that would be downwind of a southwest wind.
I'm going to use my finger to measure it. It is, oh, at least 1,200 feet, maybe a little bit more than that.
Which one are you talking about? Alright, okay, this house. Thank you.
Let me talk about this.
Oh, this one, up here? Yeah, it'd be, yeah, it'd be this one up here. Okay. Okay. I, I'm done, chair.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a few, I have a few questions. So we talked about wetlands. What was the story with all the trees that were cut already?
That is under field edge clearing allowed to farmers.
Okay.
So that's an exempt agricultural activity under Wetlands Protection.
Okay. And how many plants are we talking about per acre?
I mean, so we haven't yet set the strategy here, so this is, we can do auto flowers, which have a much tighter planting pattern, or we can do full-term plants that are much broader and leafier. And so, you know, until we get clarity that a special permit is possible, we haven't yet set our genetics or our planting schedule.
So are you thinking 3 by 3, 5 by 5, 1 by 1?
Yeah, 2 by 1, something like that.
2 by 1, so you're talking in that area over 100,000 plants?
I think it would be less because we were using, you know, plastic mulching rows and you're doing spacing between them, and so it nets out to be far less than that.
Ballpark? People are going to want to know, so I'm asking questions that are people going to want to know. Are you going to be planting 100 plants? Are you going to be planting 10,000?
Sure.
So by the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, the maximum amount of space that can be cultivated under one license is 100,000 square feet. Now, that doesn't mean the entire field is capped at 100,000 square feet, but the area that a plant can occupy, the area actually occupied by plants caps out at 100,000 square feet.
Right.
So that should give some sense of, and again, there's a lot of different ways that they could lay out the plants, but that should give some sense of how many plants can be farmed on this site. Regardless of the size of the field, they're capped at 100,000 square feet.
I understand, I understand that completely. I'm just understanding, trying to understand how many plants you're going to put in 100,000 square feet? Whether they're spread out over 3 acres or if they're concentrated?
Like a range.
Yeah, right, give me, give me a range. I mean, I'm very understanding of the space that it takes to grow marijuana. And outdoor grows take more than 1 by 1.
And square footage canopy?
No. So. So I mean, I'm the attorney, not the expert on growing cannabis, but I believe that with 100,000 square feet of canopy, I can't imagine there being more than 100,000 square feet of, sorry, more than 100,000 plants. That seems like what it would max out at, and if, and if they're not, if they're not, if they're not going for that maximum density, I'm expecting there would be far fewer than 100,000.
Could you identify yourself, just who you were? I just was.
Yes, absolutely. I'm Isaac Fleischer. I'm an attorney from Bacon &amp; Wilson, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
So, and my, another question is, do we know the names of all the members of the LLC that are proposing this property?
Right now it's just.
We have.
Yeah, so it's Hatfield Pharmacy LLC is the proposed operator, not applicant, but operator. And it's wholly owned by one individual, Rajiv Srinath.
He's on the call virtually right now.
And where is he from?
He's from the greater Boston area.
And what is his experience in doing this?
Should we have Rajiv speak now?
Sure, yeah.
Is it possible for us to, he's on remotely?
He can speak up.
Absolutely. We'd like to know who's going to be running the program and what experience they have.
And I can also tell you that he did, he did come before, I believe, this board or was it the select board? He, Hatfield Pharmacy LLC has entered into a host community agreement with the town. And so Rajiv has come before this board in that respect, but I'd love to have him speak today as well.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I think that there may be some people in town who might question an operator from out of the area taking all the profits out of Hatfield. Just, you know, I know there's a 3% that they're going to be paying, but, you know, if this is a company out of Boston, that's going to be reaping the benefits of this property, then they're going to be pulling the cash out of this town. So, I mean, that's just some.
Further questions for, yeah, you going to say?
What?
I'm sorry, do you have any other further questions for them?
I have a couple of questions. Bernie, is this property an APR now?
It's not an APR, no.
Okay. For Mr., I might just went blank. I don't see a place on here for any waste disposal or trash cans or, not a trash can, a dumpster, or, you didn't talk about when you're trimming and packaging, there's going to be stuff that falls by the wayside. How do you, how do you propose handling that?
Sure, so I guess I'll defer to you on the cannabis waste.
Sure. I mean, so typically what we would do is have a wood chipper, and so the waste would go into the wood chipper and then be mixed with soil or cat litter, something very unpleasant, and render it unusable. And so that would then be put into a dumpster that's identified to the waste management company as, you know, what it is, and they would have a third-party contract to remove the waste from the site. And so it would be in, you know, a green waste management dumpster with a lock across the bar, so it's not accessible, even though the waste is already rendered, you know, unusable, it would be further locked and then, you know, taken away by waste management.
And you're correct that I didn't show it on the plan. The intention was that that would be inside the fence and therefore behind the privacy screen. And while the waste is rendered unusable, there's also some thought that even though, even though that's the case, still a dumpster near cannabis cultivation facility could be an attractive nuisance, so better to have it there.
Was there a loader from our chief of police regarding any type of security plan or plan of action for this facility?
The CCC requires a sign-off from the police department, and as he did at River Valley Growers, the chief signed off.
Has he signed off this one?
Yeah.
That might be helpful for the public to know.
Sure, absolutely.
So the security plan is not allowed to be shared with the public for obvious security reasons.
Right, right.
But will be approved by the police.
By the police chief.
And obtain that letter from the police. We also have here our head of security, Howard Haberman, who's joining us, and so he currently already provides security to many licensed cannabis operations, including outdoor cultivation operations similar to the ones that's proposed here. And so he, I can, I can share this on the go-to meeting here, so you guys can see their background.
What's your name?
Jared. Jared.
Jared, Jared what?
Glanzberger.
Okay. Just trying to know who everybody is.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful that, with the security, just to have that, not like, not the plan, because we understand that, but I think having the.
A document from the, from the police chief.
We will most certainly obtain that, yes. But in the meantime, we have the backgrounds and names of our 24-hour man security team that's already engaged. So if I'm, if I'm able to share my screen on the go-to meeting, I don't know if that's possible. There we go.
And I'd also note that Jared Glanzberger, who is partnered with Bernie in the venture, is currently operating a cannabis cultivation facility in Waitly, the one just over the line with Hatfield on River Road.
And so Howard here, so this just says, for everybody's reference, I can't see this, 24-hour man security fences and cameras improve safety, discourage neighborhood crime, and improve police crime fight because the recorded security, which we're mandated to keep for 90 days, could be made available to the Hatfield police should anything occur around our area. So Howie here is a 27-year West Springfield PD officer. He was a sergeant there. He spent seven years as a police sergeant at AIC and seven years at the Barnes Air National Guard Security Base. In addition, we have Scott Baraco, who spent seven years at AIC as a police force sergeant. He also provided seven years of security to Smith &amp; Wesson. Rick Paul spent 15 years providing security at the Barnes Air National Guard Base. And Mike Fernandez spent 20 years on the Springfield PD, as well as four years as a patrolman at AIC. So, you know, we have very professionalized security, and this is a, you know, this is a benefit not just to us, but also to our neighbors who can, you know, rest assured that the properties will be kept safe. And so we, licensees propose to provide 24-hour security on-site, improving site security at no cost to the neighborhood. And so this is, you know, this is something that we are prepared to bring and ensure that our site is not tampered with.
Great. Do you, any further questions, Paul? I have a couple.
On this, just on this subject, I did have a conversation with the police chief last week. I was just curious if he could report to me on any incidents that he's had or his staff have had to attend to at any of the existing operations that we have in town, and he said that there had been none to date, the one on River Road, which is the grow facility, and then the Treeworks manufacturing facility on Route 5 and 10.
I just have a couple of questions there, related to the light in the parking area. You said it would be timer and sensors, but it looks like the parking's really close to the road, so would those sensors be going on and off if someone were to be driving down the road in the middle of the night?
We can work with the lighting designers to make sure that they're pointed in the right place. The modern lighting fixtures like we're proposing are pretty tunable. And just for reference, we're, we're a good, the spaces themselves are a good 50-plus feet from the edge of the road.
Also related to the signage, you said to put the address on it. The address is slightly confusing, right? So it's 140A North Hatfield Road, but this is clearly Straits Road.
That's a good point.
Is, yeah, I'm just curious if how that, I mean, I know that's not your fault that that's what the number you were given, but I'm just wondering like how good that address will, just to name it, how good that address will be on Straits Road.
When I approached the town, he initially gave me the wrong number. He gave an odd number instead of an even number. So then he clarified that, gave us an even number, but he, I was told that we needed to go off of North Hatfield Road. Since that is 1 38 acre parcel, it will be divided, but he felt it was best to go off of North Hatfield Road instead of Straits Road.
Okay, and just thinking about, you know, box, small box trucks coming to pick up and deliver trash people, I know that traffic is already a complaint of people in town, so just something else to think about, making sure that that would be very clear to whoever that would be.
So, is access to the property going to be from North Hatfield Road or from, only from Straits Road?
For this parcel, it's going to be from Straits Road. Yes, for this parcel, it'll be from Straits Road. But eventually, we would like the access from both.
But this, this project will not have a driveway all the way across the property to that back?
Correct.
It will not.
And then, I was wondering if you could just take a little time to explain how, your conversation with the Conservation Commission and what you were approved to do with their, with their approval, because we received their determination.
Sure, and we did have a few meetings with them to hone in on exactly what could be approved through the RDA process. As folks probably know, there's, there are two levels of permit that we can go through the Conservation Commission with, the RDA for smaller projects, and then the notice of intent, which is a longer, more involved process. And so ultimately, after a couple of meetings, what we came back to at the final meeting was this plan. And as far as the Conservation Commission is concerned, all that is happening on this plan is the building of a fence in the wetland buffer zone, which is shown here. And because of the intricacies of local, state, and federal law, the growing of the plants is, is not an exempt activity under the Wetlands Protection Act, so technically that is part of what we are proposing to do here in terms of actually planting the plants in that buffer zone. But this sheet here is what was approved through the RDA.
And that doesn't, and that includes the purposes of improving any culverts, I think I remember listening and hearing.
So in addition, that's a good point. It's been so long, I forgot about those pieces of it. In addition to the work shown here, which is permitted work in the buffer zone, there was what the commission determined to be exempt agricultural work to repair existing culverts that carry those ditches under existing access to the fields. There was a third piece that I'm blanking on that was also exempt work. I, oh, it was, in addition to repairing the culverts, there was also improving those access roads at the point where they actually cross over the culverts as a separate activity that was allowed as exempt activity.
So is cleaning out those ditches an allowed activity in that zone?
If it is for the purposes of improving water flows for the growing of an agricultural commodity, which under the Wetlands Protection Act marijuana qualifies as, yes.
So those ditches could theoretically be cleaned out to increase the water flow as it leaves the property and make everybody a lot happier?
We would need to go to the Conservation Commission to get a new RDA.
Right.
My opinion is, yes, they could allow us to do that as exempt activity.
Because I've been told by some of the neighbors that they're worried about the water. This is not a dry area out there, so, I mean, anything that we, that could be done to improve the environment around this project for the neighbors would seem to be very good public relations.
Imagine that we're totally fine with that, with the caveat that we'd need to get a negative termination from Conservation.
Right, right.
Any further questions on this before we open comments to the public? Thank you very much for that. So now we're going to take time to comments from the public. As I said in the beginning, the first, the first part is comments for any supporters. Come down to the chair, introduce yourself, your name, and explain, and direct your comments to us as the board and me as the, me at the chair. And then the opponents will come up and do the same thing, and then we can ask questions that you directed to us, to the applicant, after you all make those comments. In the interest of time, because I know there's a lot of folks here, if somebody already raised your point, like, it would be great if you said, "I agree with so-and-so," so we know the number of people concerned about a particular thing, but try to avoid repeating and going over the same thing over and over again, unless it's a very, a much different point. I think that would be appreciated by everyone here, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So anyone opening this up to public comment from any supporters of the project can come down to the chair here and the microphone. And just say your name and the street you live on or.
Good evening. My name is Matt Marshand. I live at Seven Upper Farms Pass. I believe we are the closest Hatfield residents to the grow that's just north of us, so I think we have a pretty good idea of the odors that could come from it. And I'd like to say that it has not been an issue for us at all. You know, there, we, when the wind is right, we smell. You know, there, we, when the wind is right, we smell the cow farm. When the wind is right, we can hear the train. When the wind is perfect, we can smell, occasionally can sometimes smell it, but it's no more noxious than fresh fertilizer being spread on the fields or fresh manure. And we haven't had any other issues associated with that. So I'm in support of it. Hatfield is a right-to-farm community. We're supporting a local farmer. We're bringing in tax revenue for the town. And in my eyes, it's been legalized by the state of Massachusetts. There's the Cannabis Control Commission that is regulating it, and this is just another crop. We, it's another crop in a, in a right-to-farm community. Everything has its own odors with it. Like I said, it, it's not, it hasn't been a bad, bad for us. So I'm in support of it. I think it's right for supporting a local farmer and it's good for our town.
Thank you. Any further supporters?
My name is Kim Baker. I live at 96 North Hatfield Road, so I'm pretty close to this. I certainly do support it. I feel like this is most consistent with what Hatfield is about, most close to agriculture in my eyes. The 3% impact fee was touched on earlier, and I think that that is going to be something that is going to be very beneficial to not just, not just the people that are developing this and growing, but also to everybody in town with our current budgetary needs. And also, I just feel like Bernie has been incredibly transparent and very responsive to any questions or concerns that I've had. And if people took the time to maybe ask them, they would be as satisfied as I am. So I do support this, and I think that it's a good move for us.
Thank you. Any other supporters for the applicant?
Hey, what's going on? My name is McKay. I'm the owner of Treeworks in Massachusetts, just down the road here. And I'm in support of this, certainly. And one major reason for us, we look to source material to process for other retailers in the state, and we get that material from farms. And currently, we take our business to Worcester. We take our business to Boston. We take our Worcester's farm to the Berkshires. But we don't take any of our business currently to Hatfield. And there were some proposed grows dating back through the years here in Hatfield that haven't worked out for one reason or another. And, and that's one issue, but it seems from the plan that's been put forth, this has been put together the right way with the proper research. And it would be great to shop locally and have an access to outdoor sun-grown cannabis here in the valley. Most grows are large indoor grows located in cities. There's a toll on electricity. There's a whole other kind of set of issues that take place with that. We don't have access to material grown on the Connecticut River Valley here in Hatfield. And so it would be delightful for us, for many reasons, to shop locally here in Hatfield. So I'm not a resident. I can't speak to the impact there. But as a fellow business owner in this space, bringing my business hours away from our local community, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to continue to do that, and I'd love to have an option here locally. So I've gotten to know Jared personally here. I've done some business over the past couple of months. And based on that business, I, I'm definitely for this project, so I'll leave it at that.
Can you give your last name for the record?
Yep, Freeland, F-R-E-E-L-A-N-D.
Thank you.
Thanks. McKay, you, just for the sake, you are a partner in the Treeworks operation on Route 5.
I am a partner and co-founder of the company on 5 and 10.
Okay.
So, yeah, thanks.
You live in Hatfield?
My business partner Milo Childs Campolo lives in Hatfield and grew up in Hatfield. My other business partner, Tim Kane.
No, do you?
I live in Greenfield, and I'm from Gill, another local farming community.
So am I correct?
All right, this is...
I'm not going to interrupt the meeting, but do you have to be a registered voter in a town to speak?
No, you do not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, two of my business partners, one from Hatfield, one from Northampton, myself from Gill, self-funded bootstrap company, local organization, know how to state funding. So I think I have a pretty, pretty good perspective of what's going on here in the valley. Went to Turner Falls High School. My business partners both to Northampton High School, so...
Milo went to Smith Academy for a while.
He did. He went to Smith, transferred to Northampton.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other supporters for the project now come to, come forward? All right, no, if any supporters on virtually that would like to speak to the project. Just give that a moment, too. There aren't about eight people here, or six or eight people here virtually. All right. Now we're going to open for comments from opponents of the project, so come forward.
All right. My name is Patrick Van Giel. I live on 9 Cronin Hill Road. This is 55 Depot Road all over again, supersized. I want to get a few things off first. I hate the reference towards agriculture. Cannabis growth is not agriculture. Any reference or comparison to farming is deceptive and just simply false. It is not farming. So we got to get out of the way. The 3% that the host agreement we entered into, what's our guarantee? Are there any guarantees and what are we going to get? We may end up with literally $0 and we sit in the stench and all that other stuff. So that's another thing to, to consider for the board. The other thing I kept hearing in town is that if they meet all the bylaws, there's no way to stop it. Yes, we can. Our bylaw clearly states that the planning board has the authority to deny this project. So a few other things that are on here in our bylaws, the purpose of this zoning bylaws to promote and regulate the use of land, building structures to the full extent of the independent constitutional powers in cities and towns to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of Hatfield's present and future inhabitants. Now, I know behind me there's quite a few that are not going to be happy with this, which will possibly affect their health, possibly their safety, and just the general welfare with this project. Also, the planning board, the town, has the, the job, the responsibility to protect the rural, to protect the rural character, aesthetic qualities, natural, environmental, and historical features, and property values, I cannot stress this enough, of neighboring properties and the town. Looking at a few thousand feet of fencing, the planning board, I understand, is not an expert on property values. I am not. The applicant is not. I get it. However, how can the planning board consciously make a decision on this project without knowing, without seeing a study, how it affects our property values? It is the planning board, you know, the town's responsibility to ask from the applicant a reputable study that is done that shows whether or not neighboring property values are affected. Not articles out of the cannabis, you know, Daily Journal. I want a reputable third party and not, and also not near dispensaries, because property values near dispensaries tend to go up. I get that. But the grow facilities needs, that needs to be addressed.
This is just the zone.
I also want to touch on, you know, we've seen a few pictures. That's about it. But what has not been addressed is that the site plan shall address, to the extent feasible and practical, the recommendations of the Hatfield Design Guidelines as adopted by the planning board. I have not seen anything about that, not a peep. It's also in our bylaw that this project is integrated into the existing landscape and protects abutting properties. To me, that is not integrating. An eight-foot security fence that as of now, from what I hear, a barbed wire is not proposed, however, it was not addressed, that it will never go on, an eight-foot security fence does not kind of fit in. And this project needs to minimize adverse environmental impacts on such features such as wetlands, which is addressed, flat plains, not an issue, and aquifer recharge areas. Has there been anything presented from the, drawing a blank on the Conservation Commission? And, and the water is, would this possibly affect an aquifer that is nearby? I don't know where they are.
Well, there's very little impervious surfaces.
Okay. I don't know.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So you attended the hearings that we had, and I, presumably you were at the town meeting when we voted to change our bylaw to put in the 500-foot setback.
Correct.
For visibility from neighboring homes.
Correct.
And that was approved.
Correct.
But now, if I'm hearing you correctly, you don't feel like that's enough?
Because that was a compromise. If it was up to me, it would be 8,000 feet or more. But the planning board would not go beyond 500 feet.
Right. But the town, but the town did vote to increase it from 100 feet to 500 feet.
From 3 to 5, 300 to 500.
Right.
Correct. It's small victories.
Well, and there, okay, I mean...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would say, I don't want to get back and forth on each person speaking. I'd like everyone to get their points across. We'll take the points and address them to the applicant.
And just to the point, I am not arguing or challenging the 500-foot setback, because that's mad. There's no issues with that part. So I'm not, not, not arguing that. So just to continue, we've got a few more items. This project in our bylaws says it needs to minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations, nine, or Cronin Hill Road, Straits Road, North Hatfield Road, and even Route 5 and 10. They're all going to be blocked and seeing this monstrosity, you know? And this is just the first piece of the monstrosity, because this is 100,000 square foot. My understanding is this is going to grow into 400,000 feet, ginormous, ugly thing. The architectural design layout and landscaping of the proposed development is in harmony with the historic rural character of the neighborhood and the town of Hatfield. Again, eight-foot security fence all across the field does not fit in. Yes, it meets the 500-foot setback. It does not fit in with the rural character of the town of Hatfield. The proposed development is served with adequate water supply. Obviously, it's going to be a private well. I want to please ask the board to, they need to present a study that it will not affect the ground, you know, the groundwater level. My understanding is that 100,000 square feet uses about 25,000 gallons of water a day. That's a lot. And that's just the beginning. If this thing is going to get grown into 400,000 square feet, we're talking almost 100,000 gallons of water a day. That's, that's got to come from somewhere, and that's got to suck something dry somewhere. So there needs to be a study presented in that regard. Which is in our bylaws, that's, that's another set in the bylaws. I won't repeat myself. I do want to touch on that bylaw 7B5L, no odor may be noxious or cause nuisance or impair public comfort and convenience. Marijuana establishments shall incorporate odor control technology and provision. So there's a few things. First of all, one of the proponents does admit it smells. Not all the time, depending on the wind, but the proponent said he does smell it at times. So obviously, that's a violation of our bylaw, because no odor or noxious, you know, smell may, may, may be a nuisance or impair public comfort. I'm downwind from that most of the time, you know, as is most of Cronin Hill and a good portion of Straits Road. So, and I think in our bylaw also, there is a, a little bit of an issue, because obviously we do allow outdoor grow. However, the applicant is also required to incorporate odor control technology. How does an outdoor grow have odor control or odor mitigation? It's simply not possible. So I think we need to revisit the bylaws. So we need to, you know, table this project for a year, and we need to address the bylaws, because that's, it doesn't jive. We do allow outdoor grow, but they also need odor mitigation. So we got a little bit of an issue there. And then lastly, enforcement. The building inspector, my understanding, would be the, the controlling agent or the enforcer for violations. Well, I'm not sure what his times are, but also our bylaws specifies that, I won't read the whole thing, but is appointed, you know, the building inspector, whose qualification, and I'll stop right there. How do we know that our building inspectors qualify to address an odor complaint? Has he been trained? Does he have equipment? Does, you know, obviously it's subjective. How do we address this? This is, this is very vague. So I think, again, we need to go back to our bylaws and, and, and address this issue. And unfortunately, we need to table this project for a year. And then on the topic of enforcement, the applicant obviously admits that the potential of hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of revenue for the town, and again, I want to stress, we may end up with zero, but the fine is only $300 a day for a violation. On 100,000 square feet, if this grows to 400,000 square feet, how do we address that? Again, we need to address this in the bylaws. We're not ready for a monstrosity of this site. It's, it's $300 a day for a potential hundreds of thousands of dollars is operating expense. It's, it's a write-off. It's, it's nothing. It's pocket change. So I think we also need to visit, revisit the bylaws, how we address violations. And I would like to see a provision in there where you can just basically shut them down. You know, if this does end up going through, there needs to be a way that if there are complaints, they're not simply writing a $300 check every day. We need to be able to say, shut it down, plow it, done. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to the project?
Hi, my name is Chris O'Masta. I live on Malloy Avenue, Hatfield. Bernie, I, I want to make one comment before I speak. I'm against the project, and I want to say that my, me being against this project has nothing to do with your family, okay? Teddy stood by me at my wedding.
Dress the board.
And, you know, I, I would do anything for you guys, but you had made mention that you've been in business for, I think, over 100 years, farming, growing potatoes, growing other vegetables, feeding Americans. This project here is going to be drugging Americans. Marijuana is a drug. You know, not long ago, I came into this room and I voted for a president and I didn't have to show an ID, but to buy these products, drugs, you have to show an ID. I don't think that this is a good look for our town. You know, and one of the things that really struck me is when Chris, you actually made mention that the long-term goal here is not for the Simarowski name to be the overseers and growers of this. The overall long-term goal is to lease this out. And to me, that sounds like we're going to get in the Simarowski name, your blood, sweat, and tears, your broken backs are going to be used for, again, a licenser who's not even in this room right now.
They're virtually...
Somebody who has no ties to this community, somebody who didn't grow up here, somebody who hasn't been here for 100 years. There's an individual here who has some sort of license, who wants to make money. He could care less what happens to the Simarowski family. He could care less what happens to this town or the people that live here. He could care less if in five years, this whole thing fails, and then the town is left with an eight-foot tall fencing structure and 100,000 square feet or 400,000 square feet of farmland that nobody wants to farm anymore because drugs were grown there. And again, those are not, in theory, my words. Chris, you had said that the goal is, here is to lease this thing out long-term. And to me, that doesn't seem right. This, this has no family ties to the community. It's just somebody's going to use the Simarowski name and their broken backs to try to make a quick buck. And, you know, part of the thing that's striking to me is the Simarowski name has been on a sign a few miles down the road for, what, 100 years? Why is this not called Simarowski LLC? And to be honest, I think that there's a certain tone of not wanting to really be associated with things like this, because again, we're growing drugs here. Drugs that 20 years ago, everybody in this room, if you said, I'm going to grow marijuana in my backyard, you would have laughed and said, well, that's illegal. It's a drug. Well, they still are. These are still drugs. These are not tobacco leaves. These are not potatoes or vegetables or strawberries. These are drugs. You know, and I, the 3%, which has been touched on already, 3% is going to be based on revenue, correct?
Gross sales.
Gross sales, okay, thank you. So who's going to be monitoring that?
Cannabis Control Commission monitors everything.
Okay. But a good accountant can make their books look like they want to make their books look like. And if this thing fails... And if this thing fails, then the town, as it's been touched on, is going to be left with receiving no money. None, $0. And also, what's going to happen if the license holder, whom, again, is not a Hatfielder or even a Pioneer Valley member, somebody who lives in Boston, if they lose their license and they don't want to do this anymore, and there's active plants growing on that site, what's going to happen to those before a new license holder picks up that license? Are those plants going to be cut down? Are they going to be burnt? Are they going to be destroyed? What's going to happen to them? The spot index for marijuana, I'm not done yet. The spot index, the spot index in Massachusetts has gone down $1,000 per pound for marijuana. From December of 2021 to March, right now, the index for marijuana has gone down $1,000 on average per pound. So there goes our 3%, down and down and down, in a saturated marketplace. Also, we're talking about the smell and the odor nuisance. I remember when I was a kid at Hopkins Academy, they brought a canine in. They had a backpack somewhere in the auditorium, marijuana, and it was sealed. Sealed in a bag, and that dog was able to find that in a gymnasium. So I don't want to hear that this is not going to cause odor pollution to the town residents. That's ridiculous. If a canine dog can sniff out a pound of marijuana in a sealed Ziploc bag, everybody that drives in this community is going to smell this marijuana farm. And I also am curious, and I would like the board to directly address. I'm, could be wrong, but I'm relatively certain that Mr. Motika owns this property, that they do not. And they had said 30 minutes ago that they own the property. So I would like to know who actually owns this property right now.
Can I ask Mr. Motika, who's still here, and you can ask Mr. Simorowski, who's here? Excuse me?
So you don't own the property?
We've already made payments.
But you don't own it?
It hasn't been registered, but...
So you don't own it, okay. Yeah, but you don't own it, okay.
Is there a purchase and sale agreement?
Yes.
And you've given earnest money?
And, you know, one of the saddest parts is I don't live far from this at all. And with a three-and-a-half-month-old, we love and we enjoy to walk down Stray Street Road with our stroller. If this goes up, I don't, and all the other families that I see doing the same exact thing on a daily basis, who's going to want to bring their kid in a stroller past a drug farm in the town of Hatfield, Massachusetts? It's almost embarrassing that we're going to grow drugs in these farm fields. They've been in business for over 100 years, putting food on the tables of families across this country. All this is going to do is drug those families. Why don't we grow potatoes here? Why don't we grow vegetables here? Why don't we put greenhouses up here? The marijuana industry is becoming so saturated that statistics are proving in the next 10 years, more than half of these organizations are going to be out of business. I have a very close friend. He runs a multi-million-dollar operation. He's trying to sell that business so fast right now because the market is so saturated that the profit margin, his organization, multi-multi-multi-million dollars, was so insignificant, it's not even worth it anymore. So when this gentleman who holds this LLC decides that he's made enough money in time to cash out, what's going to happen to the Simorowskis? What's going to happen to this farmland?
Would you mind wrapping up?
Yeah, in a minute, I will. Yep. And the last thing that's almost atrociously funny is, I'm sure everybody in this room, maybe not the guy who holds this license, what's directly up the street from this location? Thank you. So now we're going to have a drug-growing operation potentially built down the street from a place that sells alcoholic beverages.
Both of which are legal in this state.
Which is great. The alcohol is. And I'm not saying that marijuana is not legal or illegal. But to put an outdoor-growing facility within a baseball's throwing distance of a vineyard in which people go and get intoxicated is about the dumbest idea I've heard come out of this town. You want to grow this thing? Fine. Put it in a big old building. That way, people can't get into it. And people can't smell it.
You have anything new to say?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Just wanted to say one thing. Just so that we don't have to hear this again. I wasn't born in Hatfield. I didn't grow up in Hatfield. But I've lived here for 37 years. And I will tell you that there is nowhere in our bylaws that an applicant is required to be a Hatfield resident to apply for a project. I mean, can we be a little less xenophobic here? Okay, if you don't like the project, that's fine. But let's not bring in the fact that, well, this person maybe didn't live in Hatfield their whole lives, or they're not from Hatfield, or maybe they're not from the valley. I mean, that's not part of our regulation. We still live in the United States.
I'd like to add something.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were here, Chris, in 2016. Were you a voting resident of Hatfield in 2016? Pardon me?
I was not.
In 2016, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts put on the ballot for all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth whether they wanted to legalize marijuana. And towns could either vote for it, or they could vote against it. Hatfield voted to have marijuana. They voted, and it passed. As likewise, there were similar other towns that voted, and it passed. And one town I know, for example, is either Long Meadow or East Long Meadow. They repealed it, but not one person, not one single person in the town of Hatfield came before the Board of Selectmen or the Registrar of Voters or made a petition to ban marijuana in Hatfield. We approved it. Our town said, "Yeah." 3%, this is great. So, there you are.
The majority of those people who voted against it were at work.
This was in a general election. This was in a general election.
Town meeting.
At a, no, no.
Wasn't.
This was a general election by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This wasn't a Hatfield, this wasn't a Hatfield law. This wasn't a Western Mass law or Hampshire County. This was for the whole state. So the town residents at that particular time had the option, yea or nay. They voted for it. And like I said, not one person voted, not one person came back after the election and said, "You know what? I think we made a mistake. We don't want drugs, you know, to define Hatfield." Nobody did that.
Yeah.
So, the second part of this is, if we did not implement some type of zoning laws, you could grow marijuana right on any of these blank fields right behind your house. Harrison Bardwell could be growing it in his greenhouse.
Next to the elementary school.
So we had to come up with some zoning, or otherwise, it was going to have been a free-for-all.
And we acknowledge that every single town in the Commonwealth who's approved growing marijuana, this is all new to them too. And so, you know, we're all doing this and doing the best we can with the zoning bylaws too. So, and also, Paul's point, when we proposed all these zoning bylaws, those all got passed at town meeting too. So not only was there vote in 2016, there was the vote to put the bylaws in our town bylaws as well and updating them, so.
That's what I was referring to.
Right. So I think that...
At the time, people were not anticipating...
Right, you say, "Woo-hoo marijuana," but then it's like, "Oh, wait, I have to grow this in my backyard."
Yeah, and the sheer size of it. And I forgot to ask you, the community host agreement, how long is that valid for?
Those are five years, yeah.
And then, basically, it does not necessarily have to be...
And there's also state legislation going on, talking about these host-community agreements and stuff too. So there, you know, what we say and what we're doing now, like, also could change with state law too. So that's also something to think about. Any other, I'd like to move forward.
The security gentleman has...
I would like...
He's got his hand up over there.
Would you like to, I'm trying to stay, so this doesn't become a free-for-all. I would like to...
I just have a couple of quick things for you.
Approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
These things are too good. I'm getting old. That's why I retired from police work.
So how are you going to chase those bad guys, climbing over the fence?
I was a police officer in West Springfield.
Can you introduce your name?
My name's Howard Haberman.
Yep.
I was a West Springfield police officer for 27 years. I also worked at AIC, worked at Barnes. I understand what everybody on the negative side is because I spent my whole career arresting people for this. Now I'm on the other side of the fence. I just want everybody to realize that I have never arrested somebody that smoked pot that was not compliant, okay? You guys are allowing alcohol in your city, okay? Which, how many times has your police department been on calls because people are drunk and fighting? How many times have you ever been on a call where people are smoking pot and they're fighting? They're very, usually, people that smoke pot are extremely mellow people. They're not out there fighting. They're not out there and say, "Ah, I'm going to kill you." You know, you just pinch my wife's butt, or excuse the expression, or something to that nature. You know how many calls I've been on because of that? Thousands, thousands and thousands.
The way you're speaking, it has nothing to do with growing it. That's about buying it.
Let's not get into a back and forth, please, with, please address the board.
I'm sorry. I just think that, you know, and he's right, that doesn't have anything about growing it. If you don't grow it, you can't sell it, okay? Listen, you allow alcohol in your city. These people are trying to give you revenue, not just that, they're going to create jobs in the area. Not just grow it, they're going to create jobs, which they've created jobs already. God knows how many people they've already hired because of what they're doing. I just think that, give them a shot, you know? Like I said, you know, they're saying about the odor. Well, somebody might not like the smell of cow poop that's blowing in their yard. We all have our torts, but I think you're going after the wrong thing. I think, you know something, if they're going to give you a revenue, and I understand what he's saying about what if, what if. Well, what if I die tomorrow, you know? There's a lot of what ifs in life, okay? You've got to take chances in life in order to make it. So, my thing is, is...
It's not my choice to live next to it.
Okay.
Just saying.
Thank you.
This is why I should have spoken the supporters' part of this, so we're not going...
I wanted to listen and see what people had to say.
Yep.
Before I said anything. Like I said, you know, and it's not because I work there now. I just think they're doing a great job to the easiest people who work for me. They're amazing people.
Well, you shouldn't be speaking right now. This is against it, not for it, so technically, you shouldn't be...
Thank you. Please, yes.
I'm sorry. I'm going to sit back down, all right? Obviously, somebody's a little upset.
Would someone else like to come down and speak now to the opposition of this project? I understand that there's no, like, opportunity for comments for neutral people or whatever. So you kind of have to pick a side and decide to speak to that side, the way that the format is.
Greg O'Masta, 123 North Hatfield Road. So, just a couple of things. I won't drag it out. Chris mentioned earlier, and I wrote it down here, that there is no way to scrub outdoor air. That was the statement that he made. I believe you all heard that clearly. So, that's the first thing. So the second thing I'd like to introduce to the board is that not even a year ago, the town of Sheffield, Massachusetts, had a special town meeting to limit the outdoor grow facilities. And I don't know if any of you have seen this article, but I do have copies of it if you'd like to read it.
Yeah, you can submit it for the record, too.
Yeah, but it was basically due to the noxious odors from the outdoor grow facilities.
And what did they limit it to? Just, did they limit it in size?
Yeah, so what they ended up doing, before the bylaws actually came into play in Sheffield, Sheffield allowed these guys just to open up these facilities.
No, no, but what did they limit it to?
So now they limited it to three. They had three active. They limited it to three.
Okay.
So, again, I have this. I'll give you guys to read. So that was, you know, one of the things. My other concern is this 3% host agreement with the town of Hatfield. It's my understanding that the state of Massachusetts is looking to increase taxes on grow facilities and dispensaries from 15% to 25%. So that's further going to take the profits from this operation down. And I also understand, in talking to someone else that is in this business, that there's a new article in place, Stephanie, I think you mentioned it, 280E.
Within the state, the state house?
Yeah. Yeah, they're looking to also implement that, which will have a drastic effect on how the town collects its revenue. And it won't be based on just an annual 3% fee anymore.
So just on your other point, though, it's on gross revenue, not on the net revenue in terms of the... So even if the taxes go up, it doesn't impact the gross revenue. It's on the...
Correct, but all I'm saying is that their profit margins are going to dwindle if the state actually enacts these new tax revenues that they're looking to get money out of. So, I just think that's something that, you know, should be considered. And I think, really, that's about it. I just, I'm just a little bit missed about the actually ownership of the property. It's my understanding that the property is under a buy-sell agreement contingent upon approval. And if Mr. Simorowski has made a payment to Mr. Motika, it's only to secure the buy-sell agreement. They do not own the property, to my knowledge, at this time. They are looking to buy it if this passes.
Can I just add, isn't that a common thing, though, when you do a purchase and sale, and it's contingent on getting the approval and saying, yeah?
It is, but what irks me is he clearly said he owned the property. That's, to me, is not clarity with the public. It's something other than that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, and just to clarify too, the select board is the one that negotiates that community impact fee. So, that is also something to definitely bring to them. And they're also the ones that would report to the Cannabis Control Commission about issues and stuff too. You know, just something else for another mechanism of enforcement.
Do you know, Mr. O'Masta, is the, in this new bill that the legislature is working on, would the 3%, would the towns that have 3%, would that be grandfathered in? Or would you immediately have to go to the new system?
So it's my understanding, in talking to someone in the industry, that this new law that they're looking to put into place, the town will actually have to police them and find out what it costs the town for either police, for fire, or any other services related to this operation. And then that's how they'll get their chunk of change. So at some point, it's my understanding that this 3% thing is not going to be in place anymore, and it's going to be a new system, so the town will have to ballot out to collect their revenue.
I think we'd have to review whatever was passed because I know there's a couple of different things they were negotiating.
Well, there's a House and a Senate version, and they need to be reconciled.
Aren't those things for the select board dealing with the money, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's still something we would take into consideration with this project, yes.
Right, and then, two other little bits of information. There's approximately 46,000 plants in this first phase, give or take, times four. The other concerning piece of information, as my neighbor mentioned, is the amount of water that this is actually going to take. It's massive amounts of water. My concern is that the runoff from that goes into those ditches. It goes to the Mill River and ends up in the Connecticut. So who is also going to monitor the water quality going through those ditches?
Yep.
Can you give us that article?
Sure.
Thank you. We'll give this, if you want to take a look at it, and then just give it to Gerard to add to the record.
Well, Gerard, if you can make copies for us, that would be great.
Any other opponents would like to speak to the project?
I would like to speak neutrally on the subject.
Yes, then feel free to come down.
Michael Bartlett, I live at 66 Mountain Road. Is this Phase 1 of a larger project?
It's our understanding, yeah, but this is the only thing that we're voting on right now.
Okay. So I think that a stormwater management...
Michael, just, so the only thing, and this gets to a point that Mr. O'Masta made. I mean, we are reviewing just what's here.
Right.
I think it's part of a larger project.
It could be, but this is all they're asking for. It doesn't mean that by anything we do or say on this means anything about anything future.
Yeah, they'd have to come for a permit anytime there would be any sort of expansion or changing.
Okay. So, I think this needs a storm management. So, I think this needs a storm management plan to lay the fears the owner to the north of being flooded out. All the stormwater that enters the ditch flows close behind the house at the Bodzinski property. You know, if there's three greenhouses, why wouldn't there be 12 more? And that would impact runoff. It's listed under 7.1.25B, where the full scope of the development of the parcel includes more than one acre in discontinuous locations and in different schedules.
Yep.
And I believe the community outreach meeting should be rescheduled. Tuesday at 1 o'clock on a cold, windy day in March, there was 30 mile an hour wind, 30 degrees. Mr. Landsberger, I told him to go sit in his car because he had hypothermia, he was getting hypothermia, he was drawing on the map, he couldn't hold a pen or speak.
Yeah, that's something that the, the select board has to address with the Cannabis Control Commission related to that, because they're supposed to be held during more convenient hours, according to this, the Cannabis Control Commission.
Sunday night at midnight wasn't available. Will any of the marijuana be sold as medical marijuana to the retail consumer?
That's something that we can ask.
No. No, so a medical license, medical?
An MTC, Medical Treatment Center, requires that you be vertically integrated, unfortunately, so we can't just have a licensee there that is just a standalone farm. They need to have a farm, a processor, and a retail under the current guidelines from the CCC.
The biggest issue is both 7A.4, B1, and B2, and 7A.6.3 mandate that all activities conducted within a fully enclosed building with no plants visible from outside the building. Will any plants be visible outside of a building?
They will be behind the security fence with.
That's not really a building.
Right, but I think that that, if you're referring to K, which is marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia should not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located.
Correct.
Yeah. That is primarily intended to deal with retail establishments, so that there's no, like, advertising or any, like, a, like a.
I think a marijuana establishment is also a cultivation facility.
Right, but in this particular case, you'd have to be trespassing.
I don't think you could sever, sever it to say, well, we kind of only meant that.
Right, but you, but you'd have to be trespassing to see a marijuana plant, because it's going to be behind a security with, with screening.
At the, at the facility on north, on, on Main Street on the north end, plants are visible from the road. I can see the bottom of the back fence that abuts the river. I was there two days ago. They're clearly visible from the road.
From river road?
Correct.
Because it's elevated probably a little bit?
It's elevated, clearly visible.
That would be something for the zoning enforcement officer, I would say, and I also, again, don't want to get in the back and forth, getting back to every single point that you're saying.
Okay, well, anyways.
Because we'll take that all.
I think the middle ground is grow all of this in greenhouses. That's the middle ground. Nobody wants it outdoors. The product will be substandard outdoors. I believe that facility hasn't sold one ounce of last year's product. So it'll be unsellable, it's unsellable. If you haven't sold it by now, you're not gonna, next growing season's starting. So why do we want to do this for something that doesn't produce any income to the town? And, you know, we got to go through all this for zero in sales, it's not worth it. So I propose everything ought to be in a greenhouse with mechanical ventilation to mitigate the smell. And I don't think it's too much to ask. I think, you know, growing it outside is a disaster waiting to happen. And if we're just, we're just looking at this one project, let's, let's vote to say, let's give it a year to see how it goes, one growing season, to see how it goes, to see what they pay, what it smells like, what it looks like from the road, before, before we go to Phase 2, and 3, and 4.
Well, we're, we're only looking at this. This is, as far as we're concerned, this is, this is it. This is all we're looking at.
Okay, let's put it all in greenhouses. Let's do it. You guys agree about it? Let's do it. You're not going to have a product to sell.
You can't afford to do it in greenhouses, that's why they don't grow it.
I mean, if you can't afford it, you know, do something different. You can grow a tomato, and that's only $2 a pound, right? Instead of $2,000 a pound. If you can grow a tomato in a greenhouse, you can grow, you know, $2,000 product in a greenhouse. So, that's what I propose, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't sign it yet, though.
Oh, yeah, then, yeah. Do you have that chart?
I can do it after, it's up to you. After?
Yeah, and just say your name and, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just got here, I apologize. Name's Robert Wykoff, I'm at 4 North Hatfield Road. Just to preface this, this whole thing would take five minutes. I'm going to read a few things if I can. I have some questions mixed in, we can answer them as we go, or answer them at the end, however they feel. The following are a few headlines and quotes from articles that represent only a tiny fraction of what's available online with a quick Google search. This will only take a minute, like I said, so please allow me to read them before I ask any questions. I believe they will add context to what I'm going to ask. March 2022, Gorham, Maine, quote, burglary of Gor, burglary of Gorham marijuana grow shows risks involved in Maine's high-flying business, end quote. 2021, Oakland, California, regarding a recent marijuana robbery spree, the Oakland police chief stated, quote, "Our department encountered roving caravans of hundreds of vehicles targeting cannabis operations locations, several throughout the city of Oakland. As officers were approaching these vehicles to take action, we encountered over 175 rounds being fired, which made us stand at a safe distance, but we recognized that in a moment, or recognized in that moment that serious gunfire was being used during the midst of these attempted burglaries and robberies." To follow up on that, that occurred again this year in Oakland. San Joaquin, California, November 2020, quote, "During an attempted theft of plants from a large marijuana grow, suspects exchanged several gunshots with the owners of the grow. Two are struck, one dies as a result of injuries," end of headline. April 2022, in Adelanto, California, quote, "A security guard working at a marijuana facility in Adelanto was, was held at gunpoint while the business was robbed, officials said," end quote. April 11, 2022, Seattle, Washington, suspects arrested for murder, string of armed robberies at pot shops, end quote. October 28, 2020, Riverside, California, quote, "Seven bodies, nothing stolen. Were killings at Riverside Marijuana Grow a message?" End quote. July 26, 2019, Detroit, Michigan, armed bandits plant deadly bullseye on rural medical marijuana growers, end quote. And March 2022, New Bedford, Massachusetts, quote, "Police tie string of New England weed business robberies to New Bedford home," end quote. That took me about 20 minutes, including what time it took me to cut and paste it at the airport on my phone and put it into an email, because I didn't think I'd make it here today. In, in doing this, I also came across a discussion of the, that was, that the problem of crime associated with the legal marijuana industry has even prompted the pro-marijuana group, Americans for Safe Access, ASA, to develop its, quote, "Robbery Preparedness Guide" in response to growing reports of targeted crime at marijuana retailers. Again, go home, Google it, this is a snippet, took me five minutes, or 20 minutes to put it all together in paper. My first question would be, to whoever wants to engage in this encounter, why should the people of Hatfield accept an obvious risk of violent criminal encounters that comes with allowing millions of dollars of marijuana to be grown mere feet from a quiet residential area? Is there, what's the justification for that?
So you weren't here earlier when I mentioned?
Yes, I apologize if I'm.
That I spoke to the police chief last week?
Yes.
And to date, he has not had any?
I heard that. Not to cut you off, but California is five year, was five years into this before this stuff started to even come up. And to, to speak to those other growers in Maro, in Hatfield, I, I lived here and I didn't, didn't even know they were there. They're not on the road, they're not on a road that's traveled by hundreds of people going to and from work to a CNS on that road that are going to be, I mean, now I'm looking at the plan, like, are you kidding me? That's right on the road.
That's on Streets Road.
That's on Streets Road, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
On the dirt, dirt part of Streets Road.
That gets very little traffic.
Nonetheless, the lack of, I mean, this is such a, you're talking, whatever's already in town is such a small amount, there's just no way, you know, you're not going to compare it to, this is a state that's, these are states that are several years ahead of us in this whole industry. And, and I'm just saying that, that, I don't think that speaks to the future of what, of what could happen. But, point taken, fine, there hasn't been an incident, according to the police chief. All right, my next question, if, if anyone contests that there is, there isn't a risk, so there's no risk, there's no crime, right? So why do we need the sophisticated fencing, lighting, cameras, screening, a police, what is it, we doing off-duty police officers that are guarding, is that what's going on? Why?
Security firm, yeah.
Security to protect their, their investment?
The Cannabis Control Commission requires all of that.
I wonder why, what are they protecting it from? Do you think that we have an illicit product that's, that's desirable to not only legal buyers, but illegal traffickers and, and, and people that are in the industry? I think we do, so.
You know, CC, I mean, CNS has fencing and security as well, because they've got product in there that they don't want to have stolen, right?
Okay, research, Google how many grocery wholesalers have had robberies in the last, across the country.
Could I ask you, do you have any statistics for Western Massachusetts?
I don't.
Springfield, Holyoke, East Hampton?
Right, right.
Hampshire County?
Oh, do you think crime's decreasing in this area?
No, I'm not asking that question.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't.
We're looking for statistics that are relevant. We're not 3,000 miles away. Oakland, California, you ever, you ever been there?
Okay, well, New Bedford, Mass. New Bedford, Mass, and Bedford, Maine, and yes, I've lived in California, but thanks.
Oakland?
I've been to Oakland.
No, how about living in Oakland?
No.
Okay.
When was the last time you lived in Oakland? I'm not getting a physical map ready. Next question.
We're not going there.
I, I admit, the first questions are largely rhetorical, but I just want people to think about this, all right? Couple more headlines, these are on a different thread, okay? January 2022, an Associated Press article by Mike, by Michael R. Blood was titled, quote, "Double Dealing: Legal Illicit Blur in California Pot Market." As California enters its fifth year of broad legal marijuana sales, industry insiders say the practice of working simultaneously in the legal and illicit markets is all too commonplace in the struggling pot economy. We talked about, apparently there's some product that hasn't been sold already. Well, hasn't been sold on the legal market, because the market's saturated, and it's overregulated, it's overtaxed, the product, they want too much for the product to make a, for the grower to make a profit, they got to charge a lot. The guy in the street doesn't have to charge a lot. What they're doing in California is they're back-dooring their product onto the black market so that they can break even or make a profit. The, the article reported that, quote, "It's not too hard," end quote, "to operate outside the tracking system's guardrails." We're talking about the seed to whatever, sale tracking system, I'm sure Massachusetts has a similar one. The grower said, "Plants can vary widely in what each one produces, allowing for wiggle room in what gets reported, while there's little in the way of onsite inspections to verify record-keeping. The system is so loose, some legal farms move as much as 90% of their product into the illicit market, the grower added." So the question would be, how can we be assured that this operation will not get involved in illegal black market sales?
Just like we hope that you don't go and rob Paul's house this afternoon, went after the meeting, because you know he's here.
With, with, I mean, specifically with what? With the Cannabis Control Commission inspections, or what is it that we're going to do, how are we going to make sure that this isn't, we're not having box trucks leaving Hatfield at 3:00 AM, going down to New Jersey with product, out the back door? How do we know that? How do we know that the black market isn't going to have Hatfield mass typed into their GPS on their phones, and we're not going to become a through fare, or thoroughfare, or a throughway, whatever you want to say, for black market marijuana sales? Because that's what they're experiencing in other states.
I like to say that each state has very different regulations, and so I, I think it's hard to say that what's happening in a different state, especially when it comes to marijuana, is what happens in all states.
Sure, just an example.
And then also, just to state, too, with some of the other comments that have been made, and some of the ones here, too, it's not our job here to, like, decide whose business venture is, you know, going to float, right? Like, it's our job to regulate, to figure out on the land that they're doing if it's all, if the falls is zoning by laws, it's not our job to decide, we're not, it's not something that, we're not deciding it's a good business decision, that's not what we're voting on also. So, that's also just something to, for all the other comments that have been made related to whether it's going to be here for 10 years, or five years, or whatever, like, we don't know that with any business in.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And we approve plans for people to build buildings that have no guarantee that the builder is going to be in that building five or 10 years from now. So what happens to that building? It, it, you know?
Does a planning board?
No, let me finish.
Yep.
So we've permitted them to build a building, and they go belly up. So now there's an empty building out there. Did we make a mistake by giving them the permit to build that building? Was it our responsibility to check the viability of their finances before they put that building up? No.
That's part of America, and like, start your own business.
Absolutely. So if these people choose to enter into an industry that has volatility to it, the volatility is what they accept in their financial approach to this business.
Does the planning board oversee, or, or get?
Have nothing to do, we, we have nothing to do with the money. All we have to do with is, if their project is legal, where they're trying to put it.
Okay, does the planning board get to say anything about a business that would be adverse to the town's people? Regardless of what, if it's a commercial building on commercial land, can the planning board deny it because it's adverse? If I want to buy commercial land and start a fireworks factory, can I do that?
No.
North Hatfield Road.
Not in this state.
Well, and it's not, it's actually, we, it's not, it's not in our table of use, it's not allowed in the table of use, just like we, if someone wanted to put an amusement park, believe it or not, off of King Street, where the?
50 King Street.
Yeah, where the, where the farmhouse housing used to be.
Someone wanted to do that?
Yeah, yeah, they wanted to put an amusement park up there.
But it's not allowed.
It's not allowed in our, in our use table.
Is there any, is there any way for the planning board to override something that isn't clearly prohibited, but that maybe hadn't been thought of, that would be a nuisance, or like a, a dangerous nuisance in town?
Just speaking to, I'm sorry, Eric, Eric's, you know, he addressed, it's all goes down to the bylaws and causing a nuisance, or the quality of, so, right, there's.
Then I'm not completely off-track, I don't believe, mentioning this, if that's the case. I mean, we're just talking about.
Right, we have to tie it down to the, the bylaws, you know, it's not like hypothetical what could happen, it's related to how it impacts, or is, goes against our bylaws, is, is what we would be voting on.
And all the what ifs are inconsequential to this decision. All the what ifs financially for that company, they're inconsequential to our decision.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not at all concerned financially about the company, I'm just saying.
Right, so if you're, you're.
I'm talking about the security thing, that's my main interest. And I'm saying that if a business is, is a strong enough possibility of creating an, an absolute quality of life issue, a security issue with the town, regardless, is, regardless of whether or not it's spelled out as being inappropriate usage of the land, can the planning board decline it?
So we can, what we can do is, because I don't think we really know a lot of the statistics about crime and related to marijuana grow operations in Massachusetts, and so that's something that we could ask the applicant to put together more information on, and then we would consider those facts going forward with, with a vote. So I think that would probably be how we would go, how we could, within the processes, go forward with that.
That'd be greatly appreciated, and I apologize for being adversarial to you guys.
No, no, no.
I'm using you as my sounding board.
You weren't here earlier.
I don't mean to be connotation board directly.
But we do want the.
I did ask for a security.
Plan, yeah.
Plan, not to see the, the gory details of it, but this has to be reviewed by our chief of police. And as Mr. Wagner pointed out, two other facilities have not had any problems in Hatfield.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah.
And so he, he would review that and say, this is stupid, I'm not gonna approve this. So that may influence our decision, or he's gonna say, yes, this is a great, this is, they got cameras, they got guys here that with 30 years' experience on police force and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, that's something that we would probably...
Yeah, I think that's something that we would ask, and maybe even have the police
chief come to, to...
I would ask that the police chief maybe involve, if he, if he himself isn't directly involved in any of these sort of things, look into some of the agencies in, in the state that actually deal with like cross-state border stuff with black market trafficking of marijuana money and everything associated with it. Uh, so that brings me to another point about the money, so, um, and I'm almost done.
Okay, cool.
A quote from another article related to the federal ban on marijuana prevents most banks from dealing with growers, quote, "Was 'All this cash flowing around is just a recipe for disaster,'" said Smoke Wallen, chief executive of hemp health product maker Vertical Wellness Incorporated, quote, "How do you account for it? Where do you keep it? How do you move it? Even in a safe, it's a, it's a security risk for employees." Medical marijuana or legal marijuana is, is reportedly a mostly cash business in most areas, I don't know how it's doing in Massachusetts, but that at least is my understanding, and I wanna know, you know, do they have, what is the plan for moving money in and out of this property or any property in town that would be associated with this venture, if any? Is there any money transactions?
I can answer that question.
I can do it now for, for a place out in East Hampton.
Okay.
It's a, it's a company out of Denver, Mass, called 50 National Protective Services, were hired by cannabis companies, and were armed, and we bring it to, not banks, can't, obviously can't bring it to a bank, but you can do credit unions.
Okay. What, what kind of money is transported at one time?
Can we, yeah, I don't really wanna, like, I don't think we should go on the back...
It's not about the money.
No, I don't...
Well, it is if it's a nuisance, if it creates a criminal attractant in town which renders the business a, a risk for the townspeople, I think it is a planning board issue, and I think it should be brought in.
Will there be money on that, cash coming in and out of that property at all?
No, so the, the project that Howie was talking about.
Okay, so that, that makes that a moot point.
Okay, well, if this facility experiences just one of these kind of reported shootouts and, and violent robberies, uh, over the next 10 years even, is it worth the acceptable cost of, is that, is that an acceptable cost of doing business? Again, a rhetorical question, I'll close with that, thank you.
Thank you. It seemed like it was petering out, but, um, I, hopefully we can, um, wrap up the opponents, uh, coming to speak, if there's any other opponents that would like to come speak, and then after that, we'll take a quick break and then come back. Um, yes?
Eric, does anybody see?
Yeah, please sit down and print, yeah.
I'm the board to the north. Um, I've talked with Bernie and with Jared, and they've been very cordial with, you know, discussing plans with me and saying they would work with us. Uh, my main concern is, I have the ditches, that's been mentioned multiple times, and the changes to the water flow, uh, potentially coming off the property. Um, I've said before, uh, that, you know, that ditch that runs under North Hatfield Road drains not only my property, it drains O'Masses to the north of me, it drains Black Birch to the north of me, uh, it drains this property, and it, uh, drains property even to the south. The ditch network is very extensive, um, so altering that is a major concern of mine. My property is wet already as it is, uh, and adding any additional water to that property would make my property unusable. Uh, there was some discussion of potentially tiling this project to dry out the top of the, the field so it'd be more workable and usable, um, and that is a concern I have. Bernie has, you know, talked with me and said that he would work with us, but without being able to have, you know, a full plan in front of me, um, I have to say that I can't be for it at this moment, uh, especially where there's been discussion of there being multiple operations. I know they'd have to be approved by the planning board, I know some of these things would have to be addressed, um, to go through the planning board, but without knowing the full potential, uh, especially when you start to include potential solar panels, uh, it's, it's hard to envision the whole project and the impact. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that these guys wouldn't work with us, um, but at the same time, without seeing a full site plan for the full acreage, that is the concern that I have. Uh, I'm also concerned because I think, sitting up here saying I'm not for it, um, what the further potential is for the property if it doesn't stay in ag. Is it going to become houses? Is it going to become something else, and is that going to be a further detriment to the neighborhood for the ditches, the water network and other things where it's not ag? Uh, so I think it's a bigger issue even beyond just the potential of the marijuana farm or marijuana farms, uh, and warrants further discussion and review as to, you know, the potential parcel as a whole and what it means to the hydrology of the neighborhood. Um, you know, Bob and I have discussed how these soils in this area were classified as a special classification for ag. Um, so I, I mean, on one hand, I'm concerned about the smell and what it could do to my property, on the other hand, I'm as concerned as to what an alternative may be.
So by alternative, you mean if it were to be developed into houses?
Correct.
Yeah. Can I, can I ask, uh, um, you a question? On just what's being proposed, okay? Which is all that we're reviewing right now. Um, do you have, first of all, as was mentioned earlier, I don't know if, were you here when Chris was talking?
I was not, unfortunately, I didn't get here till about 7:00.
Yeah, so Chris was mentioning that, um, you know, maintaining the ditches because these would be agricultural activities under the wetlands law.
Yes.
Would allow for those ditches to be maintained in a way that maybe you couldn't do it if it was a subdivision.
Correct.
Um, so knowing what you know about the scope of what you have in front of you, is this something that maybe you and the applicant could work on with the ditches if it was, knowing, this is all we're talking about right now, is just this?
I, I understand that, and, um, to be entirely honest, there is no ditch on the property boundary that attaches to this current plan. It would be if it moves forward, uh, heading west, and you add the additional three.
Okay.
Uh, and then the potential of the solar panels, that's where you get more into the ditch network.
Okay, but so what we're looking at right now then would have somewhat of a minimal impact on your property, or could it benefit you in terms of maybe the cleaning up of the ditches unrelated to any expansion of this project, just what we're looking at?
Potentially, but, you know, I, I'm not, that end of the property is a bit drier, which I assume is why you guys are starting there. It, it's going to be the easiest to start with, um, where it is drier. Um, so, there did used to be a ditch that went from Straits Road all the way over to North Hatfield Road if you go to old photos. So, um, I worked with NRCS as part of the USDA to get the ditch network called prior converted wetland, so that way I could maintain it. Uh, so as long as the land stays in ag production, that would be allowed under USDA rules, um, which I believe also would meet CONCOM and Mass DEP rules.
And marijuana grow, growing, they said, does also meet that also.
I, I can't comment about the USDA stuff.
USDA, right, right, right.
But under the Wetlands Protection Act for Massachusetts, uh, we'd be able to get an exemption for that.
Uh, so, um, so working with NRCS on that, I did obtain 1935 aerial photos of the whole property, and that ditch did run, um, east to west across that, that property line. So it has over the years been eroded from disking and plowing and different crops being there. So, uh, if that was reconstruction, reconstructed, would it help dry out properties? Potentially, but I don't know. Um, so again, without having more of those details in front of me, um, that is, you know, my concern is being the direct butter. Um, you know, there were wetland flags placed last fall, um, both on my property, uh, as well as the neighboring property. Uh, I personally took some offense to that after spending hours arguing with NRCS, getting it called not wetland, um, and without being notified of that. Uh, so that was another concern I had was, uh, who, who was part of that? Was the CONCOM involved? Um, to my knowledge, and again, I'm, I'm speaking about NRCS and USDA, um, that, uh, wetland delineations are based on during the growing season and on finding wetland plants, not just hydro soils. So, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, uh, I don't know how you could in New England create a, uh, that situation, so. Um, and I, I don't know that that necessarily lends anything, uh, to this, to this specific parcel, but again, um, where it has been mentioned that there is intent of four total grow operations and potential solar, uh, I know that's not here now, but, you know, I, I echo that's what I've heard, uh, just like other folks have, and I would like to know more about that, uh, before I could be, um, on the side of saying I'm, I'm for this, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, yeah, any other opponents before we wrap up?
Hi, I'm Linda Molesky, 8 North Hatfield Road in Hatfield, and I'm gonna come from a different direction. I'm gonna come within a five-mile radius of that field. 20 people have cancer, seven of them had Gillian's Paray, including our school nurse who had it three times, my husband, Tommy Yagodinsky, and the Launey boy. My thing is, what do we do? We all built on tobacco land. Temec, the chemical that was sprayed on that land, now you're gonna go grow pot and you're gonna put it in people's lungs. So we're gonna kill more people by putting poison in their lungs and that all.
Thank you.
It's a point of clarification, has tobacco ever been grown on that property that you're talking about, that you're, I'm talking to the Samorowskis. Has tobacco ever been grown on that property?
Not to my knowledge.
Uh-huh. And what, if I may ask the, just cause, uh, for clarification, um, we all know the, the history of temec in this area, especially in Wheatley. Um, what are the requirements on use of, you know, traditional herbicides and pesticides that are right now used on tobacco, potatoes, a whole host of things that are grown here in Hatfield? What is the...
The CCC requires us to test the soil before we grow in it, and they see the results. If we, if there's something in there we can't grow in, we're not gonna grow in it.
But what about the growing of the marijuana? Is it?
We're, we're really not permitted to put anything on more than salad dressing. I mean, it's, you know, it's garlic oil and the like, we're not allowed to.
Are you, are you growing...
It's organic.
Are you growing organically?
Organic.
And there's lots of testing, right, with this?
Yes.
It's actually the CCC requirements that it effectively be organic, although I don't think they certify it, or something like that.
It's already in the soil, it's in the soil.
If there's something in the soil that they're gonna see it, we won't be able to grow in it.
Is there, are there any other comments for opponents of the project that, to bring up points that have not already been raised? If not, we...
Can I clarify?
You have to come to the mic, their mic.
This is on page 103.
Yep.
If the lawyer wants to explain how he's gonna defend this, marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia should not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located. No outside storage is permitted.
Should we respond to that now? Because it's come up a couple times.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, so outdoor growing is, is a permitted use under the Hatfield bylaws. Consistent with how that use is described, blocking, um, any visibility of the plants from outside the parcel using this, uh, fencing with the screen, uh, satisfies that requirement. To read it otherwise would prohibit any outdoor cultivation, which runs contrary to the, the bylaws that have established specifically outdoor cultivation as separate from greenhouse cultivation, and allow it by special permit in the rural residential zone.
And the, and the, uh, fixed building, uh, grow facilities, you know, like in Holyoke where they're doing it in old, uh, you know, factories.
Later on in the bylaws, it says, when there's a dispute, the more specific term will be used. So I don't know how you're gonna have outdoor plants that are not visible from outside of a building.
So, so again, it, it's, the way that it's drafted, uh, requires you to either read it as only indoor growing is allowed in Hatfield, or, can I say it wrong? Or that, uh, or that, uh, blocking marijuana plants from being visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located means, um...
Are you reading section K?
Yeah, I'm gonna read it the whole thing. Marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located. So, they're not visible by members of the public, uh, to, to, because of the, because of the fencing. It doesn't say that, uh, that marijuana plants, uh, must be indoors, it says they, they shall not be visible outside of the building. They're not visible because of the fence, and any other reading runs contrary to, uh, the establishment of a permitted use of outdoor cultivation.
Defined building.
I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if it's defined in the bylaws, but even if...
I don't necessarily think a fence is a building.
This is something we can look into.
Doesn't say outside the fence.
Right, it says it shall not be...
Specifically would say outside the fence, if it would have meant.
What I'm focusing on is shall not be visible, so...
We can ask, we can look into that with our town attorney as well to get a determination for it as well.
Sure, even if, um...
It doesn't say it should not be located.
7A is not applicable, it's a precursor to 7B, and it says multiple times that it shall not be visible from outside of a building, multiple times.
You mean 7A, the medical marijuana?
Correct. It is the predecessor of 7B, which I think if you meant to say...
But if you look at 7B2's scope, section 7B relates only to marijuana establishments authorized by general law 94G and not to medical marijuana treatment centers authorized by general 94I, and they have applied for under the two table of use categories that fall under 7B.
I'm just saying that if you intended it to be inside of a fence, there was four or five years where you could have read inside of a building and changed it to inside of a fence. There are multiple times.
There are many town zoning ordinances that say marijuana plants shall not be located outside of a building. This says shall not be visible from outside of the building, which is a rational way of reading it, because the intent here is that the public isn't driving by marijuana plants, uh, that are, that are visible from the road or other public places. They've allowed outdoor growing under certain conditions, and one of the conditions is it can't be visible, and that's what this fence accomplishes.
I think we're going back and forth saying the same thing, and it's something that we can look into.
You know, a natural person...
No outside storage, so that's like saying, you can grow them inside a building, chop them up, put them in a box, and then put them outside inside a fence, that would be technically breaking this rule.
This is...
But we can grow them outside, that's fine, that makes no sense.
I just, I just don't think, I just don't think down the road it's gonna hold up. If it meant outside of a fence, specifically it would say this.
Okay.
If it meant outside of a fence.
Yep, we can take, ask that question also to our town attorney, who's also helped us write these bylaws as well.
So I just wanna reiterate, just put them in the greenhouse, you'll have a better product.
You've, you've said that.
As far as I know, if they get dusty, which is, that's the dustiest road in town, if they get dusty, it holds moisture on them, and when it holds moisture, they're gonna rot. You'll have zero product and you'll be very disappointed after the first season.
Thank you. Um, with, thank you. With that, if there's not any other points that I would like to be brought up, I would like to make a, um, I guess there's no motion because it's still a public hearing, but move into the next phase of this, which is now, um, the board talking with the applicant and/or talking to, so kind of what we've kind of been doing informally anyway, but just being more, but having...
We do need to move to close the public hearing and then we have...
Is there anything more though that we'd like to say to the applicant or...
Well, we can have our conversation with them then, we could also then, if we want, we can vote to extend the hearing.
So in other towns, once the hearing is closed, the applicant's not allowed to say anything, so just...
That's interesting.
Make sure you do it appropriately.
All right, well, we can...
Right, so now this is the time, right, this is the time for us to ask that, but it's the, the, we're moving away from public, the comments from the opponents and supporters.
One thing that I forgot to mention is, the, it also violates the encouragement of open space because of the fencing, so that's a violation of the bylaws.
All right, so with that, I actually would like to take, make a...
Houses.
I would like to make a motion for like a five-minute break so I can run to the bathroom, and I don't know if anybody else needs to as well, if, uh...
Go ahead.
Okay, we'll be back in a couple minutes. We are back from a quick break, uh, we're still open with the public hearing, uh, but we've closed comments from supporters and opponents right now, so now it's time for the board to ask questions of the applicant and determining next, going to the next step Based on, you know, some of the points raised and some of the things that have come up Based on, you know, some of the points raised and some of the things that have come up over the course of this, I think that we would like some more information on some things, which would probably allow us or ask for us to continue the hearing, but we want to make sure you're clear on what we are -- what we would want more information on. To start, which was brought up, unless there are any -- also, if there's any additional questions, too. I would like to know probably a little bit more about what the gentleman from Go Farm came in and said something about tiling the fields, and just wanted to make sure if that was something that you're considering doing with this and what that would entail. I'm also, I would like to talk to my board a little bit more about the waiving of the stormwater management plan, you know, if it's something that the public is interested in seeing, even if it says that there's no impact or not, like, I don't know, I feel like maybe we should ask for that, considering there's also a lot of watering that is happening on the -- even if it's just a more richer understanding of how that works and how stormwater and would run off of this. I don't know if others feel similarly on the board?
Yeah, I'd like to see a stormwater move.
I know you asked for that waiver, but I think we would like to see that.
So then, specifically, the waiver is about actually creating, say, detention infiltration areas to offset the change from the proposed impervious area, as opposed to simply sort of making some qualitative statements about how water is moving. And I can tell you, I did run at the property level. The calculations show no change in stormwater because of rounding, that there's literally not enough impervious area to actually change the runoff value of the land if you take the property as a whole. Obviously, if we cut it small enough, then there would be, and we could use that.
Because that imperviousness would be the greenhouse roofs, essentially.
And the gravel to a smaller extent.
And that was something the Conservation Commission also probably was looked at, too.
And these are all gravel, this is not macadam.
Correct.
And then the other piece just -- what was the other piece that I was gonna? It's all my notes, sorry. I think those are on my end. Oh, and then having the security plan brought forth, like I said, not the details, but it might be helpful to have the police chief or whoever is reviewing that either give a statement or be here to ask some questions, because I think the community's concerned, the neighborhood's concerned about that, and so coming from a town, a police chief and not, you know, your own studies and things like that might be helpful. And when asking, too, I'll probably reach out to him as well if these plans aren't coming, and asking him to look into other, like what he -- crime related to marijuana in the state, I would, in specifically the Connecticut River Valley. Because I, yeah, that's some -- it's all new, right? And so we should look into that. Anything else?
I got a question. Could you talk to me a little bit about the water? Where it's coming from and what's going to happen to it?
That's my question, too.
Okay, so say you're going to grow, we'll take an arbitrary number, you're going to grow 40,000 plants.
And this is something that also can be presented next time, too. This is also something we could present next time, too, if they don't have the answers.
Right.
Get some numbers.
Right, so say you're going to grow, what was your projection on plants per 100,000 square feet?
Forty-five, fifty-five thousand.
Okay, so what I'd like to know is where that water is coming from, and how much of it is going to get aspirated to the plants, and how much it is going to end up being runoff. And I know that from experience, it takes somewhere around maybe two or three gallons of water per marijuana plant to get a proper yield, a good yield out of them.
So three gallons, how much, how often?
Per day.
Per day.
Per day, yeah, water per day. You know, so I would like just come up with some numbers about where you're going to get the water, and how you think that the water, the extraction of that water is going to affect the water table. Are you talking about wells? And if so, is that going to lower the water table and make Mr. Watch his face, I can't remember his name, from the Go Farm property a little drier? Or is it going to have the opposite effect? I mean, so if you start pulling a lot of water out of the ground to water these plants, one theory is that it's going to make the ground around it drier. One theory is that there's going to be a lot of runoff, and it's going to make the water, ground around it, a lot wetter. So just come up with some facts about what's going to happen with the water, how much you intend to use, and how much you think that the plants will use during their growing cycle, and it ranges, as they get bigger, they take more water, as we all, well, some of us know.
And I know some of this is the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, but also, like, I don't think the public went to those meetings, so they're here tonight, and they'll be at the continued hearing, and I think it's important for us as well as them to know.
Right, and I don't mean this to be contentious. You know, I think that it's important to understand the water part of this.
Have you done a test well yet to see what kind of water draw you're going to get out there?
Yes, they're confident there's plenty of water there.
Okay, so that would be, if you could give us a report on water.
Right.
So, yeah, anything else that we would want for a continued hearing, even though Paul won't be here, I think it's --
Okay, my final question, I'll shut my mouth, and I don't think you're going to find it, but I don't know if there's any studies in Western Mass, particularly Hampshire County regarding property values. I looked into some when Colorado first came online. You know what happened? They went up. All the property went up. They went up.
Dispensaries.
Huh?
Dispensaries.
Well, dispensaries, I don't know. So let's see if there's any numbers out there for Western Mass. Let's not talk about what's happening in Oakland, California, or Riverside, or Colorado. Or Boston. But let's talk about Hampshire County or Hampden County, where they're growing a lot of this product, Holyoke, Springfield, East Hampton. I don't need it now.
This is for next time, yes.
This is something that would appease some of the applicants, or I mean, the public that are concerned about their property values.
And something, again, we should consider with, you know, with our decision, so. Any other things that we would like to see at the next hearing?
I would just like to make a final comment. To everybody here in the room, we are reviewing what Chris proposed tonight, okay? I have no idea how much more they want to do. When we first met with them, they talked about a much bigger project, it's solar, but this is what they have come in to ask for. And this is the only thing we can review, and any decision we make on this has no bearing on anything else that they may propose to do. So I just want to point out to everybody that, Eric, I know you don't want this to be any comment about agriculture, but if this was hemp, it would be agriculture, and there would be no security fence around it. And you would be seeing --
It still smells.
That's right. It still smells, but it's agriculture, and we wouldn't even be having this conversation. None of us would be in this room together right now, okay? And you would be able to see the pot plants from wherever you were driving, and there would be some idiot who thought that it was smokable, and they'd be in there, just like people steal tomatoes and people steal from the farm stands we have here in town. And they live in Hatfield, and they steal from the farm stands in town. They're not from Holyoke, they're not from Chicopee, they're from Hatfield. I talked to this Grodnicks, because they film them, and they talk to them at church. So agriculture, I know it's not technically agriculture. A 3.3-acre farm field would not be eligible for Chapter 61A tax protection. It's under five acres. A 3.3-acre farm field would not be eligible for the Agricultural Preservation Restriction Program to be protected permanently for agricultural use because it's less than five acres. We are talking about 3.3 acres. That's all we're talking about right now, is just this.
All I want to say. Is it clear what we're asking for for the next meeting, which would be the June 1st?
One thing that wasn't clear was the stormwater management plan. I wasn't sure which direction we went with that.
I think just the plan of water flow and getting --
We can talk about what we expect to see in terms of water coming out of the ground, what's going to happen to it, how much of it.
Yeah, that was my question, is how much you're using, where's it coming from, where's it going?
And it might be also helpful, because it's like the ditches on that property, you know, whoever owns that property, they're maintaining the ditches, right? But like, as the gentleman from Go Farm said, that's extensive and impacts the whole neighborhood. So if, you know, any plans for updating and maintaining the ditches that are not relative to that project? I know it's not necessarily within the scope, but just like, we would like to, I think it would be helpful to.
They're co-opping with the neighbors. I mean, all of you can benefit from this.
Right.
Could make that whole area a much more agriculturally sound property.
And neighborhood, if it's not flooding everywhere, right?
Right.
So, yeah, so it's, we're all good then with understanding that, of what we want for the next meeting. There will be a new planning board member at our next meeting. They will be allowed to vote on this if they're able to, they're sign away saying that they have watched this very long meeting and understand and have asked questions and have followed along on this process so far, so. With that.
I'll make a motion that we extend or continue the hearing on the 148 North Hatfield Road project to our next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this meeting is, the hearing's been continued to Wednesday, June 1st, 6 o'clock here, so, thank you. We still are in our meeting, though, so we have to still continue with the -- there's nothing else on the agenda, so the next would be.
Do we have minutes?
No, we'll have double minutes next time.
Okay.
Double minutes.
And with that, motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned to 8:26.
Thank you.